Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Lunenburg School Committee to order. It is Wednesday, February 28th at 6:30. And here we are at the collaborative room at the middle high school. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being broadcast at a later date over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel. If you wish to join the Zoom meeting, the meeting ID is 86530494155. Once again, this will be broadcast at a later date through the local access cable channel and on the public access Facebook page and will be found on the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel within 24 hours after the meeting. And we thank the Lunenburg Public Access people for the very good work they do all the time to keep us all caught up on what's going on. I'd also like to go off script a little bit and just say, I know it's going to get very windy this evening. If your connection at home or our technological connection fails, the meeting keeps going. So if you can't hear us at home all of a sudden and you have a comment you wish to make, you have to come and join us. If the power goes out here, however, we will stop. But as long as the power is on, we will be here. Okay, just had to make sure that was clear. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the chair. Votes may be taken up as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by open meeting law. So I would ask you if you are able to rise the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will begin with public comment this evening. The school committee welcomes comments from the public. Comments addressing topics under the scope and authority of the school committee are welcome at either public comment section. Please remember this is public comment, not discussion, and limit your comments to three minutes. Each public comic sec- se- public comment section has a maximum of 10 minutes, however, we can vote to waive that. Comments about individual students are prohibited by state and federal law.
Prior to the start, can we, can I make a motion to extend it?
Certainly.
Do I do it now?
You may.
Okay, I would make a motion to extend public comment beyond 10 minutes.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right then, if you do have a public comment, you need to come to the desk and make sure that your microphone has the green button. Press on it if it doesn't and state your name and address. Yes?
So I just wanted to make a public comment. I missed the last meeting last week. I was on vacation with my family, but I did watch the YouTube video and I just wanted to thank the committee members for their advocacy of the students.
All righty. And you may go ahead.
Hi, um, I guess I can sit. Um, Sophia Muley, 139 Cove Road. I want to address the issue with intervention regarding the music department, the music program. I know that that time is being used to help people who might need more help, get that help in classes like English and math, whatever it may be, especially to sort of preserve the good MCAS scores Lunenburg usually has. Kids usually in Lunenburg perform very well with MCAS. So we, you know, we're a pretty well-performing town in terms of MCAS. And if we want more time to do that, I can actually understand that because if we can do better, why wouldn't we want to do better, you know? Why wouldn't we want to do that? The thing with that, though, is that that's perfectly understandable and relatable. But when you're good at something, you push yourself to do even better because improvement is good and it's positive and we want to see that in our lives. I can relate to that as well. Working as a team to better ourselves to achieve a greater goal, encouraging one another to pursue what you're passionate about more and more. When you're in a band, that's actually exactly what happens. It's exactly what happens. So you can add that extra time to better those already pretty great scores if you feel that's necessary. But know that it is at a huge expense if that means that kids can no longer do band. You'd be stripping so many kids of the opportunity to be part of something bigger than themselves, to work hard as a team, just as any good sports team would, which here in Lunenburg, we have no shortage of. So please, if you would just consider how big of an impact cuts this program would be. The fifth grade band right now has some 30-plus students. It would be highly detrimental to the middle school bands in terms of numbers and interest if those were to just disappear. There are two posters in the middle school and high school band room right now. One of them says, "Hard work beats talent if talent doesn't work hard." And the other one says, "Oh, the places you'll go." And I'm going to be honest, I look at those every day and I have looked at those every day since I started here in sixth grade. And they're, they remind me that what I do is not for nothing and that in my life, I'm going great place, uh, great places and that my hard work isn't nothing and that being a part of something like that, you know, it, it's, it just makes me feel like I am part of something that is, that means something. We did a show a couple of years ago in marching band and it was titled Passion. And it was all about how people have different passions in art, in dance, in music, in, in, in any area of that sort. And we worked so hard on it just to show that we were passionate about it.
20 seconds.
Every time I see my high school band director in the hallway, he salutes to me and I salute back because I honor my position as the drum major. This is passion and this is real. And so I'd like to strongly thank the members on the school committee who have taken the time and effort to listen and understand where me and my peers are coming from. So just think, why are you content of get, uh, with getting rid of something like that in our school district? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments?
Hi, my name is Jude Pancholi. I live in 622 West Street and I'm in the fourth grade. And in the third grade, my teacher, Mr. Cavaco, let me and my friends start a band. I got hooked on music. My mom has been paying for very expensive music lessons for me. I've been looking forward to fifth grade band. My classes missed out on a lot, like field trips, class plays, kindergarten graduation, and now we don't get health class. Taking band away will be another big loss for my grade and future students. Music improves everything. Being in a band will help students be part of a team, make new friends, and help us think in new creative ways. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi.
Hi.
Shershana Muley, 139 Cove Road. After that kid, I probably don't have to say anything. However, I just want to thank the committee and the superintendent for responding to my email with questions about the scheduling of fifth grade band. I know that this conversation has evolved and I'm still very interested in preserving all of the school budget, as are all of you. And there are many important things and a lot of people will speak for that. So I have to continue to speak for the music program. The suggestion is that because of scheduling of intervention and specials at Turkey Hill Elementary, it might be doable to put some form of fifth grade band in the morning before school. The problem with that is that the quality of the instruction, the time on the learning, and the equity issues are not addressed adequately. Additionally, making the fifth grade band a stipend position rather than a full-time in-school instruction position demeans the importance of that position. And we'll just repeat that obviously this point to FTE does not have a major impact on the budget. I understand that this conversation has moved beyond paying for it and is really about how the fifth grade day is structured. I also want to say that it is important for students who are falling behind to get extra help. The fifth grade music teacher made clear that if kids need to go to intervention, they do not have to come to band. That the way it is set up now, I don't see how it's not a workable compromise. And then the kids who can't be there before or after school can have the opportunity. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. We have a comment from someone on Zoom, Krista.
Good evening. Um, my name is Krista Diamond Topless. I live at 53 Whiting Street. I am also a seventh grade teacher here at Lunenburg Middle School. A little background, I grew up in Lunenburg. I went through the Lunenburg School System. I have worked in the district for the last nine years and I've been a resident since May of 2022. I know that we are going to be discussing an override tonight. I wanted to share my thoughts and feelings about this potential proposal. Being a resident and also working for the school, I obviously have a lot vested in these decisions and I've been following the school committee meetings very closely, obviously because they directly affect me. First of all, I want to thank all of the parents and residents of the town who've spoken in support of the teachers, the positions, and the programs of the school. It is such an incredible community and I personally have felt very supported by many. I also want to thank the school committee for their time and patience through this entire process and their willingness to hear everyone's opinions and perspectives and take them into consideration. I want to be clear, I am not against an override. I know that we have done it in the past and I would do anything to support our schools. However, at this point, I don't think it's fair to ask the residents of Lunenburg for an override when I feel like there is more that we can do. I don't feel like we have exhausted all of our options at this point. It seems to me that we are cutting most where students are affected. Positions seem to continue to be reworked at the administrative level and educator and paraprofessional positions are the ones that we are losing. I can share that this process has impacted the morale of the staff. Educators are working tirelessly each day to best support our students and we are at a loss that our numbers are cut and we will be asked to do more with less. I'm not against an override, but I would like to see a budget where those who work with the students are not the most impacted. I understand that this is a very difficult process and I just want to say I'm very appreciative of all the hard work and the time that everyone has put in and to try to solve these issues. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments at this time?
Actually prepared comments, so need my reading glasses. So on the Lockwood 91 Main Street, I'm going to read off some numbers which are, I asked the town manager for her latest line item budget. So if my numbers are not exactly like yours, might be that she has been twinkling with things. She, she sent me this information last Friday. From her data, the combined budget increase that we'll have for FY '25 will total 80, um, eight, $889,402. That's an average of 1.94. And I think we're not seeing the 2.5 or a little over because we lost the 342,000. So that's why the overall. The total school budget for FY '24 after pro forma recap was $24,082,518. Her preliminary budget was $24,867. That's a 2.98 increase, which I think is the common number. That, that increase in your budget, in the school budget All the other town budgets, all the other departments and other needs, including the debt, our debt allowance and the payments, is $21,859 for FY '24 after pro, uh, pro forma recap. Her budget for FY '25 for everything else is $22,131,218. That is an increase of $171,752, 4.79 of the overall budget increase for that section. The school's budget increase of $717,649 represents 80.69% of the budget increase we are seeing this year. All other departments, the $171,752, accounts for 19.31%. While I hear that and I see that the 2.94 proposed school budget increase, increase is not sufficient to maintain the law-
30 seconds.
I'm sorry, can you repeat?
30 seconds.
Of what?
You have three minutes for a comment. You're down to full 20 seconds now.
Can I please ask for an extension?
You, you, you have three minutes. So we'll give you 30 more seconds. We won't take off this part of the discussion.
Okay, while I hear the 2.94 proposed budget increase is not sufficient for the level of education Lunenburg is known for, I'm not sure we have enough money in the budget to offset the many cuts proposed by the 2.94. Even if the most modest budget increase allocated to the other town departments were directed to the school budget, it wouldn't adequately address education concerns stemming from this budget. The failure of the last override had significant repercussions in 2011, notably affecting the music department with lasting consequences. For instances, when my daughter joined the music marching band, there were over 60 students involved. However, when she left at, at her senior year, there were less, there were fewer than 40. I believe a reasonable override is attainable, both in town meeting and on the ballot. However, the schools must conduct thorough budget assessment to eliminate excesses and relocate resources. A modest override such as a 2%, equivalent to just under $800,000, would million impact the average single-family home in Lunenburg, costing homeowners approximately $150 annually or $12.50 monthly. Furthermore, I urge this committee, this committee to collaborate with others. Adopting a confrontational stance towards other towns, departments, and committees fosters a us versus them dynamic that hinders progress. Instead, I propose a request to override and seek a meeting with the select board to garner their support. Cooperation with both boards and the town manager in effectively communicating with residents is crucial for success with the passage of override.
Okay, we, we have to stop.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, can I ask Ms. Lockwood, could you email your comments to us that you just shared?
Sure.
Particularly the numbers.
Yeah, the numbers.
You want the numbers or the comments?
No, I want it all.
Oh, okay, I'll do that.
In, in full disclosure, the numbers that you just characterized don't line up with my understanding of the town manager's proposal last week. So I'd like to take a hard look at it.
I'll be happy to send you her, the spreadsheet, my, my other sheet and this comment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? There are none, I don't think. If there's someone on Zoom that I'm not seeing, would you sing out? Yes, there is someone. Or perhaps don't. All right then. I don't have it in front of me, so. Okay, then we will continue on. I'm going to continue with the chair's report. It has been a very busy couple of weeks. We've met with our state delegation. They do not paint a rosy picture regarding additional state funding. They have suggested submitting an earmark proposal that would help, albeit limitedly, with our budget. Three proposals have been forwarded to the select board for consideration. The finance committee voted to organize an override effort after looking at the state of the entire town. We thank them for their leadership and we'll discuss this further in the evening. And I would like to congratulate the girls' track team on their second-place finish at the Division V State Championship. Well done. Next on our agenda, we have no minutes this evening. We do have warrants that were loaded up, I believe, today. So probably people didn't have enough time to see them. But if you have questions, let us know, please. And then the superintendent's report.
Do we have a line on the transfer?
Do we have a line on the transfer? No.
Okay.
No, I didn't think so.
Good evening. I'll be brief so that we can get to the important discussions on this agenda. Kindergarten registration has been ongoing since early January. Currently, we have 90 kindergartners enrolled for next school year. A reminder that the pre-K registration for next year opens this week, March 1st. Extended day registration for summer program starts registration on Monday, April 22nd. The extended day before and after school for next school year, registration will open on Wednesday, May 1st. And the early learning center registration will open on Monday, May 20th. Some reminders coming up in March. March 6th is our next school committee meeting. That will be hybrid from Town Hall at 6:30. March 14th, the school department budget will be presented to the finance committee. March 15th, no school for students. There will be a professional development day for staff. March 20th is our next regularly scheduled school committee meeting, which will be hybrid from the middle high school, also at 6:30. That meeting will also be our public budget hearing on the FY '25 budget. And just for information for the committee, that budget hearing must be posted in the newspaper at least seven days prior to the hearing. So I will need to know, know later than next Wednesday's meeting, what budget percentage and total dollar value will we be posting for that public hearing notice? I, I need to include both of those pieces of information in the notice that's published in the paper. And then it will be sent off to the paper on Thursday.
Okay?
Excuse me, the hearing is what day, our hearing?
The 20th.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, the 20th.
And just for clarification, that number does not oblige us to accept or not that number. It's just what we intend to hear from you as a proposed budget at that hearing, subject to any sort of modification on behalf of the school committee.
Correct, yes. Okay. So student representative report, is our student online?
The town of Lunenburg is currently on mute, so no one on Zoom will hear her.
I'm the town of Lunenburg. I'm on mute because Lunenburg is the actual meeting and the microphones are all connected to that one. I don't see.
I don't see her, so we will continue. New business, we have a discussion about the circuit breaker. So Mrs. Hansgaard, I'm guessing that's all yours.
You guessed correctly. Kate, will you be able to pull up those slides?
Can you go to the next slide? All right. So the circuit breaker program, it is a special education reimbursement program that the state put in, in for FY '04. It was started for, for additional state funding to districts for the high cost of special education students in out-of-district placements. Prior to that, there was a different funding in place that was a 50-50 split with out-of-district placements, but the circuit breaker in 2004 came into being, which is what I'm going to be explaining now. So the threshold for the eligibility for circuit breaker, it's four times the state average of the foundation per pupil. So for example, if you've got a per pupil, and I think it's on the next slide, Kate, if you could just scroll down. So here's the example. So four times the foundation. If our per pupil expenditure was $8,852, four times that in this example is $35,408. We pay that upfront first for an out-of-district payment and then anything after that is what we get reimbursed depending on the percentage points, the percentage. So in FY '08, the state average foundation per pupil was 8852, like I just said. If the out-of-district placement was $50,000, you would first subtract that $35,000 off of it and change. If the reimbursement was 75%, which it has been the last few years, we would get reimbursed $10,944 for that placement, for that one out-of-district placement. Next slide. An exception to, there are exceptions to this rule and this was discussed at one of our school committee meetings, the one where we were in the auditorium. So for children placed in a school district outside of their hometown by the Department of Transitional Services and also for students who don't have a parent or guardian in the Commonwealth, the reimbursement is 100% reimbursed. We do not have, nor have we ever had, any students that fall under that. But if we ever did, they would be reimbursed 100% if they were placed out of district. The other one that I'll talk about later is the 125% above, which is extraordinary costs. Transportation reimbursement is something that came in a few years ago. So it was, began with the implementation of the Student Opportunity Act. So its reimbursement is based on per student cost paid by the district. And the FY rate for transportation was 57% reimbursement. So what that is, is we calculate our out-of-district costs at that and it has been 75%. Last year, we had to submit some information on what we paid for transportation for these out-of-district students. And it's not only our vans that we reimburse that, that are eligible for this, but any parent who privately transport their child to an out-of-district placement, that also can be reimbursed in this formula. And so once the threshold of 75% has been met through circuit breaker, then they determine how much they will reimburse for the transportation. And last year, it was 57% they were able to reimburse for transportation. For Lunenburg, it worked out last year, we got 400 and change. 300 and something of it was circuit breaker. 80,000 of it was transportation. Okay. The reimbursement application starts in July. It's always been the beginning of July is when I have to submit that paperwork. And so Loreen, my administrative assistant, and I work on getting all of those, that paperwork done and having those spreadsheets filled out so that they, we do meet, we have met the deadline every year for, it's usually right around July 4th.
Is your green light on?
Mm-hmm. Let me scroll down. So a few details. Administrative and overhead costs are not reimbursable. It's the standard rates set by OSD that determine the reimbursement, what the costs are. So for example, in some cases, there may be a school that, the tuition is different than what OSD charges or the district may pay different than what the OSD rate is. They don't get reimbursed on that additional rate. It's just the OSD rate. For your knowledge base, we don't place, we have not had to place students since I've been here in a, in a school that is not Chapter 766 approved. So we always fall under that guideline. And then if you look down to the next slide, those were the increases to the state approved. So OSD, I had talked about this before- So OSD, I had talked about this before. OSD has the, has the ability to change the rates of private schools every year and what they get, their cost of living increase, so to speak. So you can see from FY eleven what that, what those increases were, all the way down to FY twenty-three. And then, oh, there's FY twenty-four, there's the fourteen percent that we were all blindsided by. And this slide, I found some information on there. It was actually a two-part factor with five point one eight was the cost of living adjustment and then the eight point eight two, my goodness, was the workforce stabilization. This year, they're projected that it's going to be four point six nine. And they do let us know in October, they're required to let us know by October every year. And so I always do factor that in when I'm giving, when I'm giving the budget every year. So this year, it's going to be four point six nine. So not as big of a jump, but still more than what we've seen in past years.
What does that translate to in terms of dollars?
So last year, that fourteen percent, it was up over a hundred thousand dollars it cost us. So basically, we're getting the same services, but we paid, I want to say, I think it was a hundred and thirty, about, about a hundred and thirty thousand, we had to pay additionally for the same services, the same students. We didn't have any additional students going out, per se. It was just, that was just that cost of living.
So roughly based on, on a basis of a million dollars coming out of FY twenty-three to FY twenty-four, we saw basically an increase of fourteen percent?
Yes. I mean, the OSD rate increased. So every private school increased fourteen percent their tuition rate.
Okay. And that, that excludes transportation costs, that's straight to?
It includes, it excludes transportation costs. It also excludes collaboratives. Collaboratives are not part of the OSD rate. The superintendents are part of the Executive Board on the collaboratives and they, they work with the executive director to determine the collaborative rate increases. Excuse me, every year. The collaborative rate increases are not that much. They're not, they weren't fourteen percent last year. They were higher than, usually the collaboratives are higher, they're usually in the four-point range. But they weren't fourteen percent last year.
Are collaborative rates governed by the state as well, or can they charge?
Nope. The collaborative rates are, like I said, determined by the superintendents and the Executive Board.
So we have a reason to keep them?
Mm-hmm. Yep. That being said, the collaborative programs have a lot of very specific needs at their meeting. And so depending on what their overhead costs are for their medically-based programs and for their other programs where they have very significant students based on there, that they may have a need to look for additional costs. But that's, that's, like I said, the superintendents and the executive director work together for that.
When do we find out their rates?
Usually not by October first. We usually don't determine, those rates usually come. Generally, I think in the past, Kate, it's been when our budgets have been approved that their next year's budgets are approved.
So there's some variance there?
There's some variance. I typically will use the OSD rate and just jump up the collaboratives. Last year, for the fourteen percent, we had a buffer for them. This year, I'm guessing that it's probably going to come into about the same for collaboratives. So the reimbursement payments, so the payments are made on a quarterly basis. And because it's subject to appropriation, they usually don't just split it up. If, if, when I give my, when I submit my paperwork in July, when I see that we're, we should be eligible, if it's going to be seventy-five percent that we get this much, it's not necessarily split into four equal payments. They usually start with the first payment, a less amount of money, and then by the second and third and fourth quarter, they make up that difference in there. And that's all determined by the state. And, and a lot of that, too, is because DESI also goes through and they audit a certain number of districts every year to verify that the costs are what they were, that the paperwork lines up as far as the bills and then what OSD charges or is allowable. And so they do their auditing process, too. So they have a checks and balances system within the state to make sure before that final payment. And then sometimes there are, there is an additional payment at the end that might make up some of the difference as well. Now for extra high-cost increases, and this is the one that, that we had talked about at our last two school committee meetings ago, I believe. So extraordinary relief. If a district is hit with extraordinary relief, and that's if your expenses for out-of-districts have, have increased over a hundred and twenty-five percent that year, you may be eligible for additional extraordinary relief payment to help that increase. We've never qualified for that extraordinary relief payment, so we've never, we've never applied for it. But it's there. If we were to get an influx of multiple students in out-of-district placements that would increase ours, that is available. And then that claim, usually it comes out in February, but you can start looking to see if you qualify for it so that you can be prepared to, to submit that for the following year. But remember, the Circuit Breaker is a reimbursement program. It's not a pay-ahead program. It's always on what we've already seen.
I'm sorry, can I just ask another qualifying question then? So the example that you gave for FY twenty-four being, oh, I'm sorry. I'm conflating different programs in my head. Never mind.
That's fine. So like I had said, Circuit Breaker audit, Circuit Breaker claims are audited by DESI. Adjustments are made to future payments in the event of disallowed costs. The single biggest reason for costs being disallowed is the services haven't been clearly documented on the students' IEPs. They don't match up with the OSD. Sometimes the bills are missed, are wrong. And so, like I said, that's part of the auditing process. And that.
There is no audio. There is no audio. Sorry.
So only, and Kate, I can't see over the.
Sorry, I just need to let everyone know.
That's okay.
We have no audio because with whatever hacking happened a short time ago, which the police were already looking into, the Lunenburg logged in laptop host that the microphones are all connected to was removed from the meeting and cannot be readmitted. But we said, technical difficulties, meeting was here, so.
Oh, that's unfortunate.
Can we do a shared screen and be able to show that? You can share, like, visual?
This is the screenshot on Zoom.
No, I mean, there's no audio. Or it's.
She's writing it.
Right now.
Always something.
While we have a break, can I, we're going to have Ms. Hanscom introduce herself, just for those of us who don't.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry about that.
So I'm Juliana Hanscom, the Director of Special Services for Lunenburg Public Schools. For you all, too, to know, the school committee and for anyone who's got the budgets in front of them. So how we differentiate in our budgets, we have a line that says private schools and then we have a line that says collaboratives. So the private schools encompasses not only private day, but also residential schools. And then we have the collaborative schools. So if you add both of those lines up, that's the total that we have for our out-of-district students. That's the total cost for out-of-district students. Circuit Breaker, when we have that chunk of money that comes in, it depends on how the business manager and the superintendent wants to divvy up those funds. So sometimes, in some years, you might see it all hit towards the private school lines. Sometimes you might see it all hit in the collaboratives. Most of the time, it's split between both of them, but it's really just a juggling act, which is why when I submit my budget, you'll see what the costs are without Circuit Breaker and then what the costs, and then what Circuit Breaker is. And then it determines on where it puts them. So where you might see my, my collaborative line might say a hundred thousand. It might actually be three hundred thousand, but they might have hit two hundred thousand, planned two hundred thousand towards Circuit Breaker. So that's why you might see the difference in there. I've tried to be transparent on any of my budget sheets and I can move, I can do that moving forward. If you have questions about that, I can explain that further.
Yeah, is that reflected on our budget sheets that we have? We factored in anticipating some percentage of reimbursement.
Okay, so the budget lines, these budget lines factor in. What, what percentage do we factor in for reimbursement? Do we go with?
I went with seventy-five percent. Kate's not as optimistic as I am.
I, I am being particularly cautious because this budget is going to be so tight that if the reimbursement doesn't come in at that level, we're in trouble.
What's the worst we've seen for reimbursement?
Recording in progress.
The worst we've seen for reimbursement, I want to say back in the day, and this is back, probably when I first, it wasn't the sixties at one point. It was sixty-four, sixty-three.
So what percentage, like what percentage would we use if we were being really cautious?
I would prefer something more in line with sixty percent, quite frankly. Because we are going to have very tight expense lines.
But this budget here, the sample budget, that's seventy-five percent right now?
It is seventy-five percent. And that, yeah, it, it's really a crapshoot. I, I said seventy-five percent because we've had it seventy-five percent for a few years. I know how heavily it's advocated at the state level with, with our, with our legislatures. And I know that that's always been the talk of fully funding Circuit Breaker, fully funding Circuit Breaker. My thought is they're going to, they'll, they'll reduce the reimbursement for transportation before they reduce the, before they reduce, reduce the Circuit Breaker out of districts. So that's my thought, is that we'd get less reimbursement for transportation in order to make up the seventy-five percent. That's only me with my crystal ball.
Are transportation costs built into this part of the budget or do we have a separate line for transportation?
We have a separate line for transportation. But the Circuit Breaker monies that you see reflect both. I don't have Circuit Breaker under the transportation line. It's just in the out of districts.
Okay.
All right. So the thing with Circuit Breaker reimbursements, they say it should be deposited into a special education reimbursement account. They have to be spent within that following fiscal year and they're for any special education-related purposes. In our case, I believe in our district, they've always been put towards our, our out-of-district costs. Timelines. So in February, that's when, like I said, if we felt that we would be applicable for extraordinary relief, we would then apply for that. We do not apply for that, or we have not applied for that, and we, we are not applying for it this year. March, those claims would get sent in. June, July to August, we submit Circuit Breaker claims. It's always a big, been the beginning of July, a couple of times it has been later. And then those are the school district quarterly payments when, when we get the reimbursement from the state. The first, second, third, fourth. And then, like I said, the funds must be used during that current year or the next year. And then those are active links. I did check them for you, so you'll have them in your file to be able to click on if you really want to dive down even deeper into the weeds of Circuit Breaker.
Ms. Hanscom, I have a couple of questions. I know the answer because you told me last time. I'm guessing that some people might have similar questions. So the first question is, why does the school district have a duty to pay these costs? What's like the legal obligation that makes us responsible? And then the second thing is, when does the clock start for an out-of-district placement? Like, what's the last date a student can move into the district? So basically trying to show that, like, there is a time period when the budget is set that we could still receive a student and we would have no ability to change the budget.
Absolutely. So, so out-of-district placements are determined via a student's IEP, and that's the contract with the families and the schools to stay where we feel the students' needs are, are met in the least restrictive environment. Okay? In our case, we're quite fortunate. We only have eight out-of-district placements as of today this year because we did have a student age out, so we're down to eight right now, which I'm so excited about. Because that means that all of the almost two hundred and fifty-something other students are all served in our school district and they're all included into our, our program, which, which I think is fantastic. Next year, we will have another student, so we will have nine. But they're all based, like I said, on their, on their IEPs and that, that, that contract between the school district and the parents. As far as the move-in law goes, so when students as families, they tend to move in and out of districts, the deadline for that is April first. So anyone who moves into our district prior to April first, we would need to assume those costs going forward for next year. Because the assumption is, is that our budget isn't finalized until, usually after April in most school districts. Usually not Lunenburg, we tend to do ours early, we always have. But in a lot of other school districts, it doesn't get done until after that. So the, the law is April first, anything before April first is, we own that student for next year. That's if they're, if they're placed in out-of-district placements or in collaborative placements. Anything after April first, that previous, the, the previous district where the student lived has to assume that rest of that year's cost for the out-of-district placement, even though the student might be living in Lunenburg, and they have to pay for next year's. Until we have the opportunity to fully be able to budget for that student and then pick up that following year in our budget.
So let me, can I ask you a follow-up question? Suppose somebody moves into the district that has needs that would exceed the, that initial payment? Like, it's like a deductible for your insurance, but whatever.
Four times the foundation?
Yeah.
Any out-of-district payment is going to be above, and any out-of-district placement is going to be above four times the foundation.
Right, it's almost always.
Always.
Okay.
Now.
Inconceivable that it would be.
Inconceivable.
So if that happens after the budget is done, but before, or there is a gap between when we do our budget and that deadline. So we could, we could assume that call, we would have an obligation to pay for that student without having the opportunity to budget that student.
Absolutely.
Okay, so has that happened?
You had to ask that time, right? You had to put that out there.
Sure.
Had to put that out there. Anyone who's signing purchase and sales agreements, please do not do so until after April first. No, it, it, it hasn't, it, it usually has not, it has not happened as of yet. As of yet.
So the fourteen percent increase for FY twenty-four, the fourteen percent tuition increase, let's go to the slide. FY twenty-four, fourteen percent tuition increase. When did we find out about that? Was that last, that was last year? Was the?
So they, they sent the paperwork in, they sent the, the forms, like I said, in October.
Of?
Of last year, saying that, that we should expect that.
Okay.
Most of us were in shock and honestly didn't believe it, from my standpoint. I mean, you can see what those, what those numbers were. I honestly had no idea that it could actually continue to stay that way and that there wouldn't have been any legislation put into place or any movement on that. So. So unfortunately, with that, we didn't have, we did get the information there, but we still had to have it factored in. We knew that we were going to have that additional cost.
Okay, so in the FY twenty-four budget, is that fourteen percent increase built into the FY twenty-four budget? Or is that only reflected in the FY twenty-five budget?
I believe it was built into the FY twenty-four budget. We had an additional out-of-district placement last year.
Okay. We had one additional.
One additional out-of-district placement last year.
Okay, because there's a, there's a ninety-three percent increase in the collaborative tuitions line item?
Again, so that ninety-three percent might be ninety-three percent because depending on where Mr. Cassidy took that Circuit Breaker out when he presented the budget to you, that's the difference. I believe when, when you all got those budgets in years past, and Kate, correct me if I'm wrong, when you all got those budgets in years past, there wasn't the, like, I believe Mike had already taken out sometimes the Circuit Breaker monies out of those lines before you saw them, so that that's what was going to be, because we were expecting the Circuit Breaker. And so that's how the budget was presented because we knew we were going to get that money reimbursed. So that's why the, the tuitions were put in as such. If we chose not to split up the Circuit Breaker this year in that way and say we put it all in, in private schools rather than any, and I don't believe, we did put it in any collaboratives for this coming year. That's why it's going to even be more of an increase because we didn't have any Circuit Breaker buffer in that line like we've had in years past. I mean, maybe what we need to do moving forward is say, hey, we're going to put Circuit Breaker always in private schools or always in collaboratives. But again, I mean, we have more collaborative placements now than we've had in the past and we've had, we have less private, it, it fluctuates. It fluctuates, so. And the reality is, we have, if you, if you go on to even DESI and you look at the out-of-district placements in other districts, we have a very conservative amount of students placed in out-of-district placements. So although it, it takes up a big part of our budget, relatively speaking, when you look at other school districts, their out-of-district costs or placements are much higher. I know it doesn't help, it makes me feel better. The, the other factor, too, that, that's helped in the past is that while I don't, in, way, way early on in my career, there might have been a placeholder put in of, of a potential out-of-district student to hold that place for any of those move-ins that might have happened, Tony. We did get some of them in, in there. We did get some of them in the in their early days of my my career here. Um, so we might have a placeholder in. Over the years, our budgets have gotten so tight that we haven't had to have placeholders. So what did I do instead? I didn't graduate, the students that graduated or the students that aged out, I didn't necessarily take them out of next year's budget. For one thing, we have had students who should have graduated and then they didn't graduate in out of district placements. And so to jump the gun prior to that actual June date when they graduate, I didn't feel was physically responsible on my part because who's to say from October to June, they may not have gra- and they might have needed an additional year, so I kept them in. So that in the in years past has been a better buffer for our district because if I had a student age out or graduate, I kept them in, hoping that we could have the money returned back if needed, but also having a having a buffer if we had another student move in. We're down to no buffers now. We're down to no buffers because I really can't physically say, come to you and say, I want to build a buffer in of eighty, ninety, a hundred thousand dollars when we're talking about the discussions that we're having. I I don't feel it's physically responsible. I feel it's physically responsible for me to tell you what the implications are if we have a child that moves in prior to April first, or if we ha- or if we have a need, if we have a need of a new student in the district. Any other questions?
Anything else?
Yeah, I'm ready, I'm ready for it, Tony, give it to me.
Okay, I I'm probably the only person here that doesn't know this, but what's a collaborative?
So a collaborative, um, we have, we belong to Flat Collaborative, Keyst- I'm sorry, Keystone Collaborative, used to be Flat Collaborative all these years ago. So it's a consortium of districts, surrounding districts, um, that have, it's a public day school, it's a private but public day program. Um, so for example, Lunenburg belongs to Keystone, we've also placed students at CAPS before, that's another collaborative, um, a little bit further up Route Two towards Ashburnham Westminster Way. Um, and so it's it's almost a an intermar- an intermediary step between our public school, then the collaboratives, then private.
Is that based on like a spectrum of need?
Spectrum of need generally, yes, yes. So I always try to go to the collaboratives first because that's that next step. Sometimes it's not possible. Um, they do a really good job though with our medically fragile students, they do a really, really good job with our medically fragile students, so that we don't have to jump to that next step because those private schools, some of them that service our medic- that would service some of our medically fragile students are up in New Hampshire, they might be, or towards the Cape, they they're, they could be a long ways away. So it's nice that we have the collaborative to be able to keep the students as close as possible to their hometowns and still receive that additional level of care there in need.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else?
Thank you for preparing this.
No, you're welcome, you're welcome.
Yes, we appreciate that because it's kind of, um, a mystery.
It is a mystery and and if any, anytime you have questions about it, I I'm happy to talk about it. I mean, the slides can get a little confusing because if you don't live it every day, it it's hard to keep your head around it, but if if you come up with a question or just shoot it my way and I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Okay, now we have made our way to the override discussion. The way I look at this, and anybody can give me a better suggestion, is, um, let me backtrack. At the last finance committee meeting, the finance committee did vote to organize and put forth, um, the possibility of an override. And anything I say, Mr. Waters, if I say it wrong, please jump in. So with that, it, this board needs to first agree that we are in agreement that we need an override. And then secondly, by the end of this evening, we need to come up with a number because this is moving at a very frenetic pace. Um, in order to get everything accomplished that needs to be accomplished, um, the only, there are two ways an override can get to town meeting. The way it generally happens would be that the select board would agree to put it on the warrant. The other way is if there is a citizen petition. A citizen's petition only requires ten signatures and that can place an override or anything, you know, somebody did it for the plastic bags a few years ago. Um, that can put it on the ballot, the warrant, sorry, thank you. The, I'm I'm learning so much.
You are.
Um, and it was like at eleven o'clock, so when we were discussing this, so I I have to have votes. So, um, the warrant closes on the eighteenth of March, so this has to be sewed up prior to that. It would be of great benefit to everyone who is discussing this as it is on the select board agenda for Tuesday night. Um, and I am sure that FinCon will be discussing it tomorrow evening. So it is beneficial to everyone that our number comes out, if at all possible, this evening. The other second part of the override is that should it pass at town meeting, whether it's by citizen or whether it's by select board, it needs to be voted on by, on the ballot. The ballot deadline, it, for the regular election, that would be May fourteenth, I think is the number.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth, thank you, May eighteenth. That deadline is the nineteenth of March. So this needs to move relatively quickly, but it needs to be done carefully. Because it's a very, very tricky business and it's very important that it's done correctly. And, um, it has to pass both that town meeting first and then at the ballot. And I think that's what I know about overrides in a nutshell. So, um, the general thought is that we have two thoughts and then the superintendent said to me, I think we need three. One would be the level service budget, so that everything that exists today in our schools would move forward to next year, fully funded. The expense items are moved exactly where they were today, right? Just making sure, I don't mess up.
The ones that are underfunded.
Yeah, yeah. So things would move forward, our students would have the same services they have today under the level service budget. The second budget that is worth considering is the level service bu- budget minus the ESER funds. We knew the ESER funds were dropping off, it was no surprise to anybody. We planned on what to do if they did drop off. So an argument very well could be made to do level service minus the ESER funds that we knew were going to drop off. And the third option that we should discuss this evening is the superintendent's recommended budget that will come in less than the other two. So, any comments from the crew here? Uh, Mr. Beardmore?
First of all, uh, so thank you, Mayor Chair. First of all, I I just want to comment, I I have lots of thoughts here, but but probably the biggest one, and and he's in the audience, I I think the the chair of the finance committee deserves a great deal of credit here.
Agreed.
And and your leadership, uh, is, has been really extraordinary over the course of the last several weeks. Um, and and I've privately, I've commented an email and privately commented, um, to other members and the members of the public that I've spoken with over the course of the last week. Having sat in that chair myself, um, I think we have absolutely the right finance committee and the right finance committee chair in Lunenburg right now for the for the moment that we're in. Um, and and I think that what what you have done and what you have recognized, given the situation that we're in, and frankly, the public comment, um, that has has ensued, um, I I think that that your leadership is in direct response to that and I I just want to personally thank you. I I have said publicly, I think I'm on the record, that I think we need an override. I think that what has been demonstrated is that the revenues and the costs are not aligned. And as a result of that, we are quite a bit out of whack and really need to chew up. And that's across the board. I I think that there are several gaps that are outside the domain of the school committee that are within the domain of the select board and the town manager. And there are now very apparent gaps in the school budget as well. Uh, and I've I've also said that, um, I I would not be in a position where I would go out and fight for school department funds, um, to the detriment of other departments. And and to clarify, I I really intended that to mean, um, equal weighting, uh, in terms of living within budget increases on both the town side and the the school side. I don't think we're there right now from a budget standpoint. I don't think we have a clear understanding of where we're going to land on the school budget and on the town budget. The the problem that we're going to run into with an override, I think, is a twofold problem. Number one is, we don't know what our budget is going to be. So to determine what a number is going to be above that budget is to make an assumption that you know what the budget number is going to be. If I had to vote today for the town manager's proposal on the budget, I would vote no. I I don't know what our budget is going to be. So to say that number plus X number of dollars for an override is very hard to land on whatever that number is because we don't know what the what the basis is that we're going to go to town meeting with. And I I think that we're at a very disadvantaged position here and we really need to come to some resolution. And the Ms. Lockwood's points earlier, we got to work together and and come up with something that's workable. And and right now, I I just don't, I just don't think we're there. Um, so I I think that the conversation is a little bit backward in terms of our progression in this meeting. I think we need to have a budget conversation first, try to get an idea for what we think our budget should be relative to what's available in Chapter Seventy and tax taxpayer contributed dollars, our revenues and our projected revenues in the town, and then figure out what's needed on top of that. But that never, you know, nevertheless, um, I I, you know, we're obviously in a fine, in a fine mess here. Uh, and 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 there's got to be no clean way of doing this, I don't think. Um, relative to those three options, um, I I, I I think that we need to have a conversation more fully around the superintendent's recommended budget so that we.
Yes.
Have a clear understanding of what that is. Uh, my personal meaning is, the, what has been articulated by the superintendent, I think, which has generally been agreed to by the school committee, is that our budget for FY twenty-four did not necessarily meet our needs, but it was really, you know, directionally correct in terms of addressing our needs as a as a community. We're dropping off several hundred thousand dollars as a result of ESER. I can't imagine falling back beyond that, right? I think that that idea of level service minus ESER logically makes sense. I think the challenge is, is that that is a big gulp monetarily and I'm just not sure that the town has the the appetite to digest that big gulp, right? And 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 that's ultimately where we are, right? I think, you know, frankly, all of this is low probability in 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 full disclosure, uh, but I think that's where we have to kind of figure out.
Right.
Where we want to be.
Okay. Mr. Stormbrining?
So first of all, I think that we do need an override. I think figuring out what the number is will be important, but I I don't agree with the comment that was made earlier by one of the citizens about we need to squeeze more before we ask for an override. I think Dr. Burnham and her staff have done an excellent job of offering multiple budgets that show substantial cutbacks. And so I think that it is now time to do that. And I want to bring up a couple of things. First of all, I think we are all aware that costs have gone up. And then as costs have gone up, we have to understand that and implement that understanding into the budget. And by having the same mechanism of funding at the same rate, we are not paying attention to reality. We've got to change that. The second thing that I want to point out is, and I've said this before, this has been brought up at other meetings, the staff at Lunenburg Public Schools does an amazing job. They get paid significantly less than they should, as I think the last, uh, in the auditorium in the meeting, it was, we were in the top twenty-five percent in terms of results and the bottom ten percent in terms of spending. That's got to change because if it doesn't change, those numbers are going to get flipped. We're going to be in the bottom ten percent of achievement. It's not going to work. The other thing that I think is important is that we don't view this as an increase in taxes for no reason. This is part of the after effects of COVID. So as I, as we were talking about this and I've thought about this a couple of different times, I tried to figure out when there was a disruption as severe as COVID. And I look back and since the nineteen twenties, there has been a nationwide mandate, the kids go to school up to a certain age. Since that time, there has never been a disruption as profound as COVID. And the reason why I think that's tied into the budget is because we are educating children who have lost critical years in school. So my son was in kindergarten and losing kindergarten to Zoom has had huge impacts. So if we think about it as a tax increase reflective of the costs increasing across the board around the country, that's one thing, saying like, oh, we have to adjust our funding because times have changed. But it's not just the times have changed, it's that what we need to do is different because of how big of a disruption COVID was. So there was no school-wide closures during World War One, there was no school-wide closures during World War Two, and there's no other incident that has been as big nationwide as the pandemic. Even the Depression, there were places where there were a couple shutdowns, but by and large, kids still went to school. So if we think about changing the funding as a response to a permanent problem, namely that a whole, like a whole cadre of kids, what what's the term? Cohort of kids missed school for a year. I mean, like, you can't do that. If somebody came to, came to me as a lawyer and said, well, we're going to cut a year of law school, you just have to do the same, I'd be like, yeah, that's not going to work. If somebody, if you were at an operating table and a doctor stood over you and said, look, I did one last year of medical school, but it's going to be fine. Everybody would be nervous. So we've got to understand that it's not just because costs have increased, it's because we need to do more for our kids because they got less. And the final thing is, I I think that it's important because Dr. Burnham and your, you and your staff have done a lot of work on the curriculum. And two summers ago, Carol and I came in and we looked at all the changes in the curriculum. And then the next summer, we looked at the numbers and those changes bore fruit. And I understand that it's not something that was directly correlated, but it's a sign and it's an indication of the trajectory. The Lunenburg school system is on the path going in the right direction. If we do not have an override that will provide good education, compensation to staff, and ameliorate the effects of COVID, I am worried that that trajectory will change. And every single person who owns a house in this town will have their house either stay static or lose value. And I always bring it back to that because I think that fundamentally, when you ask people about money, you have to put it in terms of money, right? What do you get if there's an increase in taxes? Well, you have less money initially, but your assets are worth more, living in this town is worth more. And so I always want to make sure that we think of it that way. And finally, I think that Peter may be right, that that we're not quite there yet, but I think that if we do the organizing now and we get ready for it now and it fails, we can try again next year. It's, you know, like, people run for president even when they know they have no chance of winning because they understand that participating in the political process shapes the debate. And that's what we've got to do today. Even if we don't win, even if we are not successful this time, it will prime the pump so that we will be more successful next time. I am strongly in support of an override.
Thank you. Mrs. Brzezelski?
So just for context, we haven't passed an override in this town, uh, since nineteen ninety-two is the last time it override passed. We've had other attempts, they've failed. We've had other attempts. They failed. They usually fail when they're about the schools. The 1992 override was not about the schools. That one became almost solely about the library. So I'm, I have my doubts, but I would like to try for it. However, I think if we're going to go for an override, it has to be just for the schools. The town shouldn't be adding things on to the override. If we're going for an override, it should be school override for the school budget. And we should keep that amount of money in the school budget. I'd be a little nervous about things getting added on after or just us giving an amount and then that amount getting added on to and it becoming about more than that.
Okay. Mr. Legman?
Yes. I also want to thank the finance chair for starting the conversation early about this and educating the citizens as well as myself. I've been taking notes since he started those meetings. Just a lot of talking points about this. I think we, we saw in a lot of the meetings loud voices saying, override doesn't make sense now. I wouldn't vote for an override. But I think when you look at it, we saw a lot of people show up to school committee meetings. A lot of people show up to finance committee meetings that support an override and are inquisitive about an override and want to know more information. So I'm not quite sure about the appetite. It's, I would say it's definitely mixed. But I think there's a lot of people who are ready to invest in the schools now and they also have concerns about the future years as well. We look at the, the five to 10-year plans and what the positions that the schools want to add. I think we should take that into consideration. And also about the town, how many more positions that the town is going to need. And also looking back a year ago, when the town clerk had a raise, that the, the town meeting, we voted for a raise. It was definitely over a two and a half percent raise. A lot of the positions in the town themselves were losing people to other towns. We're getting people, we're having positions that are posted that aren't getting filled for a long period of time. This concerns that the town needs to increase wages on a lot of these positions and that they're underpaid. There was talk at the finance committee meeting about adding a grant writer position. Also, the schools concerned about a grant writer position. Taking time to, for the, the position of a land use director was, was vacant for a long time. And then again, the salaries, the, the town accountant, librarians, there's a long list. And again, employees leaving for higher paid positions elsewhere. We see it even in the school too. And what does a full staff really look like, not only in the schools and in the town? And how do we fully operate? But I think if we look at it to pass an override, it, it should be a town-wide decision where we're supporting not only the schools, but the town positions. And I think if we look at it in the big picture of supporting town positions and supporting school positions and the school and the students, I think we have a better chance of passing an override. I obviously don't know if it would pass or fail. But I think as a school committee, we need to support a budget that supports our students and our, our staff. And I think the budget that we are likely to approve is going to need an override. So I would support an override.
Okay. Well, that's down to me then. I had said in the meeting, I believe in the auditorium, that I didn't think this was a good time for an override. I would not do it without the town. I think that the town needs the money as well. Perhaps not as much as we do right now. The budgets presented or are being presented now at the finance committee level, I'm willing to bet that many of those budgets are not exactly everything they need. For example, I've had many discussions with the select board chair about town hall is only open four days a week. Wouldn't it be great to have it open five? Well, nobody can do that because we can't afford it. There's so much we can't afford. It, it just, it's just the way it works. So to do it with the town, I am behind that. I think it would work better with the town. I think if it's a straight school override, you're going to have people who say, I don't have kids at school. I'm not doing this. If, if they see something that involves the, them, if they see something that will get better because of what happens in their daily life, perhaps they will vote for it. I, I come back to my Lorax analogy that I've used many times. As the Lorax said, he speaks for the trees. Well, we speak for the children. And we can wait another year and have things crumble a little bit more. As we know, we are beginning to make progress. The, the goal that the school district has is an 80% improvement by the end of this year academically through measures we have defined through the testing. And we, it was a two-year goal and we more than made the halfway point last year. We take away the intervention teachers, forget it. You're not going to make that goal. I mean, you tried. Everybody's going to try. But you're not going to get the academic progress that has been planned for so well by our district. And I understand that people don't understand the need for curriculum leadership. As everybody knows, I taught a very long time. I taught for 35 years. And in my district, I started as a music teacher. I became a classroom teacher. I ended up in the curriculum office. Very strange path. Anyways, in my district, when we had curriculum leadership, everything moves forward. We had a school that was in the, it was a regional school district, three towns. The poorest town of the three. That school got a presidential medal for achievement. Not because everybody worked hard, but because everybody worked hard with the methods they needed, with the, with the curriculum they needed and in a way that taught every distinct child. And they got an achievement award. It was curriculum leadership that did it. That's, those positions are vital. We are seeing the fruit of those positions. We are seeing the fruit of our teachers learning how to differentiate instruction. We see it coming. And to shut it off at the path is a disservice to the children. So for that reason, I would support this offering. Mrs. Brzezinski.
Yeah, to that point, I said it at the finance committee meeting too. Like what Carol said, the, the systems we've built in place, they cost money to put in place. They cost money to implement. We have spent money, town money, tax money, implementing these systems. And to take them away even a little bit, it's going to set us back. It's going to cost us money in the long run to put them back in place. And these are children. So when we're talking about maybe losing it for a year or two or three till we can afford to build them back up, that's two or three grades of children who have lost out on these supports. Like, you know, first grade, you know, reading intervention. That's, those are, these are actual children we're talking about who are missing out on the necessary services. So to take it away now, that would be a mistake. And like I said at the finance, these, these are invisible to most parents. We don't know they're there because they're working. We only know that they're, when they're not working because our kids aren't learning to read or our kids are having issues in school or they're failing in math. But when they're working, it's like a net underneath the kids catching them and helping lift them back up. But as parents, it's, it's hard to see. Citizens, it's almost impossible to see. It just seems like a waste of money. Like, what are we spending all this money and admin for? But it's working. The test results are showing it. Our progress is showing it. And it's just, it, these cuts have been really hard. These decisions have been really hard to look at the cuts and know that we're dismantling the system that Dr. Burnham has and her team have worked really hard to build up in the past five years. Despite COVID, we've made progress. So this is, I think in the long run, it's a bad financial decision not to pursue an override and try and keep some of these systems in place. Most of these systems.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that the Lunenburg School Committee support an override.
Second.
And then we'll talk about money afterwards. Okay. Discussion, Mr. Beardmore?
I'm going to vote no until such time as I understand what we're voting for. And, and general support for an override, given all of the variables that we have right now, I, I would have to be a no.
Okay.
Can we come back to it after we do the budget discussion that's next on the agenda?
Well, we can. We certainly could come back to it. I don't know that Mr. Beardmore will get the answers that he needs through that, but we certainly can do that because the next part of this discussion would be looking at the level service budget, looking at level service minus ESER, and then looking at the superintendent's recommended budget. Because one of those would be the logical amount, but doesn't have to be. But unless we have more budgets coming out of the back of your head somewhere. Next week. There we go. You didn't want to sleep this week?
Nope.
So we, we counted that. There is a motion on the floor though that is seconded. So.
I, I think. I think to say, I mean, I, I've said, I generally support an override. But I'm not sure what the school committee voting to support an override that has no detail behind it, I'm not sure that that buys us anything, right? Actually, it's kind of a, you know, ready, fire, aim analogy, right? I think we have to zero in on what we want and then say that we're, we're going to get behind it. I, I.
I think it's the direction we're going.
And my, my thinking is the other way.
Is that if we were to say, for example, if we were to continue this conversation another half an hour and agree that the direction here is a level service override, then I can tell you on the no. So, so do I vote yes now and no later? You know what I mean? So, so I, I feel like we got to figure this out before. And, and I'm happy to vote no and we can approve and move forward. But I just, I feel like there's a, that I, I do have a duty to be somewhat consistent here in my, in my thinking.
Absolutely. And my thought was that we can't discuss how much if we don't think we're going to do it. So, so that was, I was just backwards of you.
Directionally, I think we're going to do it, right?
So, yeah, yes, it appears that way.
Would you be amenable to changing the language of the motion to pursuing an override? Or is that still not a dollar, a number?
I, I'm not sure that buys us. I mean, we could, we could not vote for this and continue the conversation and zero in on a number and then vote for something that's more substantive.
But we have a, a, a motion that is seconded. So we need to vote on this and then move forward. Unless, unless the motion is withdrawn, then we vote on it. So, so all those in favor? I, all those opposed?
No.
Okay. So now your, your objections are duly noted as to what it was. So now let's take a look at those budgets. So my thought is to start with the level service and then work our way back. Oh, we could have used mine.
Come on up to the table. Bring a chair.
Just for everyone's benefit, we are no longer admitting people into the meeting because the individual who's producing some antics on screen continues to change their identity. So we are not letting anyone else into the meeting.
That's probably the right call.
Does that violate the meeting law? No.
No, because at the beginning, I said, if we have a technical problem, which obviously we have.
I, I do think, just an editorial comment, like Zoom has a protocol and there are measures that can be taken to deal with this. We need our IT team to have us better prepared when we do this next time.
Duly noted.
Looks like my desktop.
And you can see all my tabs are open. I'm working on multiple things. Lots and lots of Excel spreadsheets, worksheets. So the way I'm looking at this is actually through the lens of the needs-based budget I was asked for by the finance committee. I was working on a budget that I thought you could come forward and recommend because I had also been asked by the town manager for a recommended budget. And for me, I think the two are one in the sink. So just a little bit of history here. I have been asked for a level service budget and I have generated one. But in my mind, without specific directions from the town manager relative to you cannot increase your expense lines, my level service budget included the expense lines funded as requested by each principal and each department head. As I told you, we know that we had expense lines underfunded in this budget. So to roll it forward, level funded, leaves us behind the eight ball again.
Could, could I just ask for some clarification here?
Yep. Yep.
Sorry, I'm trying to, I'm trying to formulate the question here. I think you know where I'm going to go. The town manager is guiding you to not increase expense lines.
She didn't guide me in any direction. I found out afterwards that she largely had told, I think, other departments when thinking of a level service, not to increase expense lines. I thought I had seen that in an email. I got no directive from the town manager. The request for a level service budget came from the finance committee.
Okay, okay.
So as I interpreted that, it's like, in order to keep everything we have now going, what does the budget need to include? And therefore, the expense lines, again, will reflect what was submitted by principals and by department heads. So, you know, facilities as an example. Again, that's captured here on this slide. I also updated, because we have to update our health insurance enrollment. So once upon a time, I had said that the level service budget was going to be round about 10 some odd percent, under 11. However, the Lunenburg staff's family has grown this year and we have many employees who have moved to a family plan, which increases our health insurance cost. So, you know, I know that there's question out there, how can it be that you're cutting positions and the health insurance is going up? That's how. And not all positions that we are proposing to cut were carrying health insurance. So.
So just to clarify, our health insurance costs are going up not just by the percentage.
They're going up because we have more people participating and at a higher rate.
There are more people participating and because there's more, there's more family members on the plan.
Those are the changes. We're seeing more family plans, which are more expensive than the individual plan.
Just wanted to clarify.
And the premiums are up 5.7%.
Yes, so our total went up more than the 5.7% because of additions onto the healthcare.
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to clarify.
And again, that number changes every single month. So what I've got captured here is what was current for February. What was submitted to Town Hall in February. I'm sure that Liz is currently working on updating and will be sending another one to Town Hall.
Just so that we're all on the same sheet of music here, that 11.46% absorbs ESER. Level services, level services.
This is everybody that we currently have, every single FTE that we currently have in our budget.
This year looks like.
Next year looks like this year.
Like this year.
Exactly like this year.
Except that there will be increased salaries because, you know, step increases or educational lane change increases. That's all in here?
The normal operating increases.
Correct. So, a level service, we're, we're looking at 11.46 with those parameters. That I funded the expense lines as they were asked by, by each.
Principals and department heads.
The value of that is that we would be looking for an additional $2.6 million on top of this year's budget. We would jump $2.6 million. And the total budget would be 25.5. Yep, those are big numbers.
So that would leave us 1.5 million short of the town, of the current town manager's budget.
Which is why I said in the beginning, when we started this, we were looking at 1.5 million dollars worth of cuts.
Right.
Yeah.
Happily, the math did come back and work out.
It did come back.
It did, yeah.
That's always a good thing, I guess.
You've been saying.
Unfortunately.
Because lately I have been doing math after four o'clock. All right. So then I took that exact level service budget and you don't have budget sheets for that because all I did to get the bottom line for the level service budget with ESER cuts was take the ESER money off the bottom line. No decisions about which positions I would recommend to be cut if we were to go in this direction. If the committee would like me to come back next week and tell you what cuts I would make, I will be happy to do that. So, the change from the level service budget, if we're looking just for ESER cuts, we're talking about 12 positions. There are currently 12 positions funded. Eight of them are professional licensed educators, so counselors or teachers, and four of them are tutors. The percentage increase from this current year's budget to move forward with this, it's an 8.7% increase. And that's a $2 million add to what we have for a budget this year.
Now, can I just, the health insurance dance doesn't quite continue because the ESER positions, the health insurance, the benefits were in the grant, right?
So some of them were, but many of those positions weren't taking health insurance.
Okay, all right.
Now, the town manager presented a budget that included a 2.97 for, 2.9 increase for the schools. So, in attempting to get there, you can see I, I got stuck at 3.0. And I'll show you in a minute what's included in that. It's a total of 27.1 full-time equivalents. It's 13.7 FTEs for teachers, three counselors, five paraprofessionals, 1.9 secretaries, one maintenance position, a part-time custodian, and two administrators, an instructional coach, and an assistant principal. And lots of cuts to expense lines. The dollar value increase here with this 3.0 is just shy of $670,000 added to the current year budget.
Just for clarification, I know this is very much in the margins. The, the percentage that was represented by the town manager was 2.94%. I don't recall the dollar value, has that been adjusted or?
I can go back and re-figure what a 2.94 is versus a 2.97. It's probably not gonna be.
I know, I understand, I just.
But I can, I can go.
Are the dollars, are the dollars left or right consistent, I guess is what I'm asking? But, I mean, we're within a margin of error, I guess.
Yep. So, in order for us to get to a 3% budget, we're gonna lose 27.1 FTEs. And these are the positions that I included. Now, most of them you've seen before. You'll see that there are no part-time custodians on this list and there is no second maintenance position on this list. But there are, there are professional positions on this list. Those are based on para positions that we have been unable to fill this year.
May I ask a question?
Certainly.
So when you talk about FTEs, you're not talking about employee cuts because some of these positions are unfilled?
Some of them are unfilled, some of them will be retirements that we won't backfill. So in other words, not every single person attached to the job listed here will be going to unemployment.
I don't suppose you could say, because of the bumping rights under the contract, how many actual people would be cut?
I could, I could get to that number for you.
Okay.
Not, not right in this moment.
No, 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 no.
Once we get to a options, like specific.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful.
But not for the clinicals yet.
I mean, just like.
I think on, on this list and the dynamic duo that's been locked in the bumper with me on spreadsheets can chime in. Amongst the teachers, we're talking about three, three retirements. The music teacher's just being reduced so that there'll be somebody that still has a job, just reduced time.
Is it going from full-time to part-time? Or is it part-time to less part-time?
Nope, it's full-time to part-time. Although the other music teacher position is part-time to less part-time. The phys ed cut has already been made. We absorbed that the second half of this year when the phys ed teacher from the primary school accepted the position as the high school assistant principal. We did not backfill that and we split the teacher at Turkey Hill to cover gym.
But not at the high school, because you get a phys ed teacher at the high school as well.
Yep.
Uh, so it's Title I Coordinator reduction.
Yep.
So. As opposed to the.
We had a position that was Title I Coordinator slash Literacy Specialist. We've been trying to get that position filled and we have dropped the Title I Coordinator component from it. We're still having a hard time getting it filled, but I will say that it is difficult to fill positions during the school year. A lot of teachers may be willing to make that move to start with us in August, but they're not willing to leave their district in December, January, February and leave their students that they've bonded with to, to make a move. So, I believe that we will be able to fill the position, but likely we will be able to fill it for a FY '25 start.
Okay. And that's a one FTE position, the literacy coordinator?
The, the literacy specialist would be a full-time. There, there are some positions that someone would be bumping into open positions. But I, I can do an analysis of how many of these exactly are unfilled and how many of them have.
I think it's probably, given how much work it is, I think it's probably only worthwhile to do that once we've picked one. I don't want you to do it for all, I mean, that would take.
Thank you.
Forever.
Thank you.
All right. So, 11-plus percent is an enormous number. And honestly, even looking at a, an 8.7 increase, that, that's a really big number. But this increase, the 2.9, is a really small number compared to what I think we need in order to continue to maintain a reasonable level of service to meet kids' needs and maintain our facilities. That is key, that's driving half of what's going on here, quite honestly. All right. So, what does a needs-based budget look like? Right now, I've, I've got in the zone of a 5.4%. That still is the elimination of 19.7 FTEs. That's still 10 teachers, three counselors, three paras, three part-time secretaries, one maintenance, a part-time custodian, and one administrator, the instructional coach. As well as some significant cuts to expense lines. The total value increase from the current year budget to get us to a 5.4 is 1.2. So let me make sure I'm screen sharing for the benefit of folks at home. Although all of these documents for this evening are on our website. So if we were to take a look at expense lines, because people have been anxious to see the budget lines, you really need me to explain what these lines are for in order to have any understanding of why they're increasing. So. This is all the non-personnel related costs in the budget. This is the percentage increase from the current year, line by line. And you can see lots of zeros. Lots of level funded.
To clarify, this is the 5.2?
This is a 5.4.
Four, I'm sorry, yeah, okay.
Mr. Schoolenbrin, you'll see that I bumped up the legal expense line because as you know, we always exceed the budgeted line. Didn't bump it up enormously, but that's more, it's realistic. We always overspend that line. So you'll see here a 4% increase on tech contracted services.
Is that dropping it down to one day a week?
No, that's maintaining our custom computer specialists who are our contracted IT management for the district. And I am gonna say again, they have been doing a phenomenal job for us. That remains two days a week. In the budget, that is the 3% budget, it's cut down to one. And we also are keeping here the HR Power School module, which was about $20,000. We have been working to build the backend of that module for a year and a half, preparing to roll it out for staff use in August. If we're going to be reducing staff and have less clerical support, et cetera, getting us to some automated systems that teachers can readily access and get information versus having to call the secretaries at central office and have them research and get them their information. It's, it frees up time for people to be working on their actual job.
In the 3.02 budget, under 1450 for administrative technology, are we getting rid of the contracted services there?
Down to one day.
Okay, because there it's still 152, 645.
Yep.
Under technology personnel. And here it's 150, 625.
Correct.
It's not a straight line cut.
Okay.
All right, we will continue to scroll down here, again, level service, you see a lot of zeros here.
The specialized computer contracted services, that's our frontline, our IEP program. And because the state is moving to the new IEP, frontline is going to be bumping up their costs, so that's a set.
And we have to have a digital platform to write our IEPs.
And can you remind us how more expensive the IEP is getting next year?
How more?
More expensive, the average.
Well, the, the, the page numbers are, they're going from like 13 pages to over 30 pages roughly. But the expenses that they're looking to bump it up maybe, what is that, like 1,500? From 54 to 71, 7150.
It's gonna be a lot more in the future.
Yeah, but they've got to build out from a 13-page template to a 39-page template. So we're, we're helping them do that. Again, zero level funded curriculum adoption, you can see that there's a 42.5% decrease. That marks the loss of the 40S, $17,000. We made some cuts to office supply lines here. Some of them were level funded because they were reasonable, we thought, to cover expenses. You'll see that there's a bump up here, a 17.6% increase in graduation expenses. That's because the cost of audio, chair rental, stage rental has gone up. We also see here that there's 4,500 in this line for high school accreditation. That's because in the years between the actual knee ask visit year, there's work that needs to be done by the school and we have folks who are in stipend. done by the school, and we have folks who are in stipended roles doing those reports that need to be written and submitted in the in-between years. So it's funded here in the budget.
The special ed hospital tutoring has increased. It was budgeted 3,000 last year, but actually we spent over 6,000 in that line last year. We saw a huge jump from January to June of the number of students who unfortunately had to be hospitalized, and then they get tutoring during that time when they're in their hospitalizations. So we try, we look to see what the trends are this year, and the trends are continuing to trend the same way as they did last year. So I didn't feel like it would be fiscally responsible to not have at least the six of what we are, what we paid last year and what it looks like we're on track this year for next year also.
You may recall that we provided you some data. Last year, we had 12 mental health-related hospitalizations requiring tutoring. Those are just the ones that went to that level that required tutoring. That doesn't capture the true picture of the mental health challenges.
Before COVID, how many was it?
Not as many.
I think that we went back a year and it was
Like six, something like that, but then we had like, like I said, I think we had like four or five until January, and then from January to June, it blossomed to like 12. And then when I looked at what was happening this year, the same trend again. It's really sad. But I'm happy that the hospitals that, the hospitals are able to provide that tutoring in a way to where those students are in there on a Monday and they start getting that tutoring on Tuesday. So it's a really nice follow-through for them to be able to still continue to get some academic work done, so that they don't feel behind, right?
Oh, yeah.
And they come back.
Our professional development line has been increased, and that's to properly budget for teacher course reimbursement. That is part of their contract. It's a benefit. You'll see that we went from zero to $17,250 for the science textbooks. That's for a renewal of digital licenses, digital books, but that license does not need to be renewed for another six years.
And that's two licenses.
What grades is that for?
Those are high school.
You can see here, these are the supply lines for the primary school for various types of supplies. They've all been drastically cut. They've been cut 63%, 26%, nearly 81%. We made some significant cutbacks where we thought we could.
And just to point out, the workbook line is really, the bulk of that is a digital license renewal for math. We're still purchasing all our ELA K through 5 with a grant for math. We took an inventory and checked with the teachers, so we ordered the fewest number of workbooks, student practice books that we could, but we do need to pay in math too for the digital Intermath subscriptions.
And what's the renewal cycle on that?
One year.
Wow, okay.
I mean, we could get into more, but
Oh, yeah, because honestly, to replace consumable paper would be more costly. And here are your supply lines for the middle school. Again, some significant cuts with the exception of an increase here on the social studies line.
Is the elementary school just not going to buy art supplies next year?
We are seriously going to be cutting back.
I know, it's just that's, I'm
They must figure they have enough to make do with it.
Care to have some, but
So just as an editorial commentator, there's been a narrative in the town that has developed over the course of the last year, that the school department budget is so large that a $1 cut in the school department is more substantial than a $1 cut, or is less substantial than a $1 cut in any other department. And I'm here to tell you that a dollar spent over here is a dollar spent over there is a dollar spent over there. A dollar is a dollar is a dollar. Interestingly, in the town manager's proposed budget, there is an increase in supplies for, in consumable supplies for children's programming in the library, which are effectively art supplies. So, once again, I don't know the value of a dollar spent on an art supply in the library versus an art supply in our elementary school, but this is the nonsense that this narrative has come down to.
Did you want to say anything about social studies at the middle school?
Well, for middle school, the workbooks, again, it's the Amplify renewal of the online subscription. We're ordering very minimal paper texts there, but we are working on how to move things to paper. That's another discussion for another night. And then in social studies, we have one grade level using online geography books and another grade level has the paper books, so we need to renew the online subscription.
I'm sorry, can I ask again for the speakers? Can I have yourselves? This is the Director of Teaching and Learning, Mrs. Scott, and this is Mrs. Hanscom, who is our Director of Special Services. So we have a slight increase in English supplies for the high school, but everything else here you see has been cut or level-funded. There's a small increase to the audiovisual supplies for the library. We kind of left the
Four dollars.
Real dollars, right?
Four dollars.
No, these are real dollars.
I think that's four dollars. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we're not, you know.
Additional shipping.
Like what you're saying, you know, we're spending $100 on
Can I say also, thank you to your staff for stepping up as far as the expense line items and really, like, I can see a lot of people really looked at their expense line items and made some really hard decisions about what to cut. I just, I really appreciate that. I can see that, like, the dollars are not being just thrown into an empty void. They're clearly thinking about where the money is going. These are some really specific and sometimes really small amounts, so thank you to them.
All right, we continue on with additional supplies at the middle school. You'll notice, please, that we did not cut the band music supply line.
No.
And we did not cut the high school band music supply line. And that music equipment line is used to repair instruments, instrument instruments. But again, you can see level-funded or some substantial cuts. General school supplies also cut or level-funded.
What falls under general school supplies?
So there's an office supply line, so think about the kinds of things that you might need to purchase for use in the office space, but the general supply line would be the kinds of supplies that teachers would access.
Markers.
Markers, yeah, definitely paper.
Okay, just wanted to get a feel for that.
And just so that everybody's aware, the cost of paper did take a pretty significant jump.
What hasn't jumped? Something's got to decrease.
Okay, so when we get into the instructional technology and you see these computer contractual service lines, that's our iReady.
Why?
We paid for it with other
Right. They had been paid. Some of these things are, you're seeing an increase because we had funded some of these things previously from grant monies.
Does this budget still get rid of this grade six through eight non-assessment iReady?
Yes.
Okay, so this is still a cut to iReady. It's just not showing on the budget because
Well, it's showing on the budget for the middle school.
Oh, for the middle school, okay.
You don't see a big jump there. That's because we're not funding it. We are going to keep the assessment platform, but not the individualized learning platform for grade six to eight.
Okay.
Can you just hold it there for a sec?
Yep.
Go back.
Yep.
I love the big screen, by the way.
Yeah.
This is very
Okay.
Guidance supplies are being cut back, with the exception of a slight increase to the guidance software. They have to renew that subscription, and there's an increase there. Again, level-funded, you'll see a jump up here and for general ed transportation. D bus is not really working with us at this point to get us down to 10 buses. They are insistent that even with moving the extended day out of TCP and not then needing to transport any of those kids to and from the schools by bus, they insist that they cannot bus our students without 11 buses. So I cannot count on that decrease.
When did we last have 10? It was recent.
Last year.
Last year. Yeah, when did we have the 11th bus?
This year, when we bused every student.
When did we have the 10th bus?
We changed.
We've had 10 buses for a long time. For a while, we had 10 and a half. We needed an 11th bus on the Primary Turkey Hill bus run. There were more kids that needed busing. On that loop, we didn't need an 11th bus for the middle high school at that point. So there were a few years that we were running at 10 and a half, but with the increase to transportation for all the students, we moved to 11 buses this year. But when that was all finalized, we had been, we were past our FY24 budget approval.
Right.
So this year, we are underfunded slightly in our general ed transportation because we needed 11 buses on both of the runs.
Do we, um, do we have a census on bus ridership?
We do ask them to provide that for us, the actual ridership, and they usually try to take a head count over a couple of days in a week. The thing is, is that the ridership, it changes.
Yeah.
We have kids at high school that are playing sports or middle school playing sports. In a given season, they're not hopping on the bus after school because they're staying, but the next season, they're not playing sports, so they're back on a bus. It's a very fluid situation, so it's hard to really nail down. But we have asked for head counts.
Anecdotally, I find myself dropping a kid off or picking up a kid frequently or coming here for a meeting at the end of the day, and I don't think I've seen a full bus this year.
Right. And again, that's because you've got 40% of the student body participating in athletics any given season, and they're not hopping on the bus.
Yeah, I mean, you look at the primary school current line too. It's the same thing. They have to have the spots for the bus, but not everybody takes it.
When is the contract with D?
Next year is the last year.
Okay.
But it doesn't matter because there's no
Exactly.
Oh, I know, I'm just wondering.
There's no competition.
Oh, I know, I had thoughts on that.
Athletic expenses, we have, for the last several years, funded at this level. A lot of the actual expenses for athletics is paid out of the revolving account. That's where the user fees go. And I promise you, before the end of this year, we'll do a breakdown of that because I will say, the athletic transportation costs are staggering. I have okayed the AD. If he can find a charter bus that will cost us less than a D bus, go ahead and use a charter bus. Because if they're, if they're taking kids to a game, a competition, we're paying for every hour that that bus sits there, and track competitions are often blocked.
Way too long.
Even when, even when the, in Leominster or Pittsburgh, even
That's right. They won't let the bus driver leave and go home and wait and come back.
And we pay for them to sit there, and sometime, a lot of the times, most of the bulk of the charges are
Just waiting.
Just waiting, and it's a lot of money. It's not the driving, it's not the transportation, it's the sitting and waiting with the bus. And it's a lot of money.
Yep.
Dr. Burn, can I ask two questions?
Yes.
Number one, if the transportation costs, both the athletic transportation costs and the general and special education transportation costs were level-funded, that would be like $200,000? Close?
Yeah, I suppose 200, 200, 300.
Yeah.
Is there any other place in the budget where we're seeing a real dollar amount increase that's that high? Like, is any, like, no, the teachers are getting that kind of bump. Oh, I guess health insurance.
And the computers.
We've got to find an alternative. So one thing
Like I said, that's why I've told the athletic director, if you can coordinate with MART, if they have buses that aren't out on the road and they have a driver and they want to charge us, send a MART bus on over, pick up our team, and take them to the competition. If you can find a charter bus company that can give us a better deal, we have to
Have we partnered with MART for sports transportation?
No, that's not something that they typically do, but we're really to that level of desperation to save on some costs here.
A couple of parents have approached me and asked, would it save us enough money or change the calculus if we increased the, like, if we had like a bus fee or something? Are we allowed to do that? Would it make enough of a difference? My guess is no.
Can I take that one?
Please do.
We discussed that at length, a couple of years ago. Yes, at length, and in order for it to make a difference, the bus fee would have to be like two grand.
Yeah.
It would have to be ridiculous. So it was, I mean, the calculus was done at the time.
I remember, I just wanted to
And it does not work. We looked at it. It was done many, many years ago when my kids were young. So like, that will tell you how long ago that was.
When I moved to St. Louis, we were charging for busing.
And you can't charge everybody because you can't charge the people that have to be bused by law.
Right, right, right.
So that eliminates a lot of people out of the mix.
That basically eliminates everyone, two and a half bys or
And the other thing, now you've got, you know
Depends on the age.
Now you've got a managerial issue because you've got to have somebody chasing after the fees to make sure that they're paid. Like, we have people chasing after the costs for broken Chromebooks that are uninsured.
We've got to figure out a way to get those, I'm not saying this to you.
Yeah.
This is, this is just stealing money from taxpayers, and it is one company that is doing it. That is unfair. It is not how free markets work. This is baloney.
Well, I agree with you entirely relative to your point around the non-competitiveness of the contract. The net-net, and it's interesting that these two lines come together when it comes to student transportation and athletic transportation, is that there is no, you know, when you look at opportunity costs in Lumenburg for things like athletics, you know as well as I do. I pay $250 every season in athletic fees. I pay another couple of hundred bucks to fund booster clubs every season, right? So now I'm at $450. I buy cleats, I buy, I pay for, you know, various additional I, I pay for, you know, various additional camps that football teams do. I mean, so when we talk about a, a free public education and then you look at the opportunity costs associated with some of these things, we're already shifting a lot of costs onto parents. And, and, you know, this sixty, seventy, eighty, ninety-five thousand dollars here in the athletics, you know, the, the parents are probably picking up three X that. You know, in, in terms of those expenses and the additional carrying costs that it costs to have a kid do, you know, in athletics. So to, to add to that with transportation fees and those kinds of things, I just, I don't think it's tenable, right? Like back to the override discussion and everybody paying their fair share and, oh, you know, only a third, you know, quarter to a third of households have students in them and that kind of thing. Well, you know, the, the net-net here is, is that we cannot shift additional costs onto parents.
I agree, but here's the problem. The transportation, the general education transportation cost increased fifteen point two percent. Inflation did not go up fifteen point two percent since last year.
As a bus.
I, I understand, but like if we had ten buses last year and we wanna go back to ten buses next year, how is it that that, I mean, it just, there's something going on.
I mean, our, our cost per bus is.
For some additional context, I was reading through what the Mr. Passios had brought over. Um, and we were donating to the Historical Society and it was notes from a nineteen fifty-six school committee meeting where they were talking about bussing and the costs. And I did the math using the inflation calculator. It's almost the same. They were spending eight hundred thousand dollars a year on a similar number of buses. They were talking about whether or not to charge bussing fees. Uh, and they were, they were discussing, uh, children walking to school and the safety and how there were no.
Sidewalks.
Sidewalks. Uh, so I, it's a lot of money, but like with inflation, it's, it's not. I, I thought it was gonna end up being dirt cheap because the amount, I can't remember what the amount was, but it was a really small amount. But with inflation, I went, huh, that's, that's weirdly similar.
I, I, I don't disagree, but the, the, the fact that it was a lot of money proportionally speaking then and it's a lot of money proportionally speaking now, doesn't mean that they're both right.
No.
It could be that they were making a lot of money back then too.
And we're, they know they have us at a disadvantage because there's no other options. We have to.
Well, so the, there is an option. It's just not a great option, but you can supply your own buses. Like we can hire our own bus drivers and buy our own buses.
Collaborative.
And a mechanic and a fuel.
I mean, I don't know if there's a savings. I mean, it costs money to put buses on the road.
Collaborative.
For other schools and.
And I would have to get my CDL license so that I could fill in as a substitute driver.
With regional schools?
If you are a regional school, you get reimbursed for this.
Oh, regional school gets some reimbursement.
They get a very high percentage.
Not as much as they were promised.
Neither here nor there, Mandy, because we are not.
Right, but that doesn't mean you can't change that.
And just, and just, I mean, thank you so much for not jumping on the special ed transportation bandwagon.
No, no, that's the.
But, but I, but I wanna just, just clarify on that, that that number would be about sixty to seventy thousand dollars more if my BCBAs didn't work with the building principals and staff to reduce the monitors this year that we have on the buses. So that reflects an additional decrease because we've been able to reduce the monitors on the bus. And I have had three different meetings or con- conversations with new transportation companies that are doing special ed transportation in this area. We had a fourth one just come through. I've reached out to all of them, had a sit-down meeting with one of them. They were all double the cost of Vanpool. So in this respect, there's not necessarily a monopoly because there's been four and now five with Vanpool that we could go, and Vanpool is still by far the cheapest. And honestly, this forty thousand in the athletic transportation is a fraction of what it actually costs.
Where is the actual cost reflected?
It's paid out of the athletic revolving accounts.
Does the special education transportation, does that include our out of district?
Yes.
Okay, I, I.
Out of district and in district and preschool.
That's both.
And private transport by parents.
So some of that is expensive.
Yeah.
I, it's, it's, it's pricey for a reason because some of it is farther and some of it is single. That makes.
It's still a big number though, in talking that. We, we all joke about the, in retirement, we should start transportation companies, you know?
No, that's just so much money.
It's a lot of money.
So we'll move on to some of the facilities related lines. Custodial supplies, level funded. The, there's a big jump here in the fuel oil heating charges. This is reflective of actual cost. Mr. Hevy actually had to, uh, refuel all of the generators and that's what it costs. Natural gas and heating charges, uh, we're bumping that up based on, um, Mr. Hevy's, you know, looking at what we've put out thus far this year, what that would be projecting forward for the last quarter of the year and therefore what to budget for next year. There's a jump up here, um, with the sewerage, uh, line. And that comes into play with the irrigation of the fields. We're losing the field. It, it's wearing thin. We have tried for two summers to restore, um, the field. And last summer was really not, uh, in much need of a whole lot of watering. Problem is that, um, the sensors on the irrigation system, some of them are not properly functioning. So we need to have somebody come in, assess that and, uh, set that straight. So they're running when, if they were sensing properly, they would not run. And the summer before was brutally hot and very dry. So if we didn't run the irrigation on those fields, um, we surely would have seen more wear on those fields.
So we're attributing our increase in sewage to irrigation?
No, but that's a part of it.
Okay, are we running reverse meters on our irrigation systems?
So that's a really interesting question and I can tell you that, um, the last year that, uh, Mr. Wanda was here, he debated this issue. We were forced to purchase a new meter for these purposes. Um, and we had a relatively new meter, but it wasn't the kind of meter that they wanted us to have. So we replaced the meter.
Serious problem.
And, you know, he felt strongly that we shouldn't be paying sewerage on the irrigation. But was not successful.
So are we want for a new meter here or?
No, no, we replaced it like they told us we needed.
I'd like Mr. Hevy to explain this when he speaks to us next week because we should not be banking sewerage on irrigation.
The electricity line, um, I had told you that this was underfunded. Please, I need everybody to understand, this is not just a Unitil bill. We are in agreements on net metering, solar energy, but we pay to participate in all of that. Mr. Hevy is trying to make sense of that whole situation and may have some recommendations if we have any wiggle room to make any changes there. I know that the town manager, um, sort of debated when I had a higher number in this line because she's been told to expect decreases in charges per kilowatt hour come November.
From Unitil.
From Unitil. But there are multiple other vendors that we pay from that line.
Okay. The concern, the, the issue around the November date is the municipal aggregation.
Yes.
And it's not, we don't, I don't know if Unitil's billing us for that or we bill separately, but that, that's the specific line. It's the kilowatt hour.
So we pay Unitil, we pay Nexamp, we pay Sprague and we pay Ecofin.
So.
And a lot of it's connected with solar and net meter.
But, yeah, so like, and I don't know how it works for us, but like my residential Nexamp charge is factored off of the municipal aggregation number because it actually discounts from that. So we need to.
Goes up and up and up.
Yeah.
But again, this line was not properly funded for this year. And so you would have seen some increase from last year to this fiscal year had it been properly budgeted and projected by our previous facility director. Um, and then you'll, there's another little bit of a jump here. And again, that's, we're, we've been looking at the actual out-the-door payments on this line.
To clarify for the public, we do have solar panels.
Yes, there are solar panels on, on the roof at Turkey Hill. Yep.
Okay. Are there solar panels on the roof here?
I do believe that, I, I, I take that back. I'm not gonna comment on that. I know for a fact that we have them on the Turkey Hill.
Yeah.
A slight increase on the trash removal. Telephone system, you see a slight increase here. Previously Verizon had one bill for Lunenburg and, um, the payment was always calculated on this percentage of what's due is the town, this percentage is every month. It was, it, that was the formula. But we just learned, uh, within the last week that the town is going to separate. So we will have our own Verizon bills and the town will have theirs. And ultimately, that's gonna be a small increase, about a hundred dollars a month, um, to that line. Maintenance of grounds, contracted services, you'll see, um, this, a little bit of money bumped up here. Again, Mr. Hevy's trying to, um, he's exploring trying to set up some contracted services, both for buildings and grounds, so that we have regular maintenance. For example, if we had a maintenance agreement with the elevator company, they would come out and they would grease and they would check the mechanicals and if there was anything happening, they would remedy that. Rather than, oh, something happened with the elevator, it's not working and now we've gotta call them in and it's an expensive charge, it's an emergency charge to get us out here that quickly. Whereas if we had a contract with them, they would come out that quickly. So he's exploring, um, some of those types of, um, increases here. This increase from sixty-three thousand to eighty thousand in the maintenance of building supplies and, and for the whole system, he came to me and he said, yeah, that, that's, that's more like the actual number. And.
Why is it the actual number? Is he saying that previously we weren't told that amount or that we always run over?
Again, I think we, we have often tapped the revolving account.
Got it.
Which is not as robust as it once was. We cannot continue to rely on the revolving account for operational expenses. Because it's, those, those accounts are gonna drain. Emergency expenditures, we bumped that line up a little because, um, Mr. Hevy is very good at figuring out what problems are and how to fix them. And we are struggling to actually execute on repairs because we don't have enough money in these lines. So he has to wait until I can see if we're gonna have any little money left at the end of this year so that we can do some of the repairs. He's got repairs for, um, every single HVAC in, in the district. We also had some, uh, repairs to our dishwashers in the kitchen. And it's not like, you know, service call for your home dishwasher, although I would say that that's very expensive as well. So we've, you've got some increases there. The maintenance of buildings contracted service. I just wanna make sure I'm mentioning the right information. We had put the, um, costs for the nine-one-one compliance upgrades for the phone systems. And then you can see moving on here, we have some level service or cuts.
It's the phone upgrade. Can you go back?
Yep.
The one forty-five to two twenty-five. Is that an eighty thousand dollar upgrade?
It's sixty-some odd plus, um, some additional monies in that line for the regular expenses that go out of that line. I'll end up talking to the finance people. I don't know that this is the line to put that money in.
Yeah.
There might be a better suited line, like up here, these are just the utility bills, so it's not really like a.
It's not a bill.
It's not an upgrade.
No, it's basically.
So anyway, I, that's, that's what's sitting there in that line.
Did we ask for an earmark for that?
That's in process.
Okay. Did we submit that? How did the process for that?
I submitted that to the select board as well as to the delegation.
Is that a?
We got, we got to submit it directly to the delegation?
Well, I gave it to them and said I'm submitting this to the select board.
They have it.
Just for their information.
Is that, is that a deferable expense?
No. Uh, if we had the money to do it, we should be doing it right now. It's a compliance issue.
Oh, the nine-one-one upgrade.
It's an appliance issue.
Why didn't we include that as part of our capital request?
Uh, because by the time I had, uh, quotes on that, um, we had already submitted to the capital. And quite frankly, this, it, it, it has to happen. It can't be that it fell below the line and it isn't gonna be funded. It has to happen. Again, lots of level funded lines here. You can see the jump up here in health insurance and it's not five point seven because of what I explained earlier. I did increase slightly the unemployment compensation. As I said, there, there will be some moves with cuts where people won't actually be leaving the district. We've got retirements that just won't be backfilled. So I don't, I don't think we're gonna hit this super hard, but the truth is, in this environment where every district is facing what we're facing and talking about overrides, there are going to be massive cuts everywhere. It is not going to be a given that every kind of licensed professional that gets cut here will have no problem finding a job. That may be true for some.
Yeah.
But not, not for all. So, um, we've increased that line slightly. We've made cuts to furniture and equipment.
Wow.
Uh, I bumped up this, uh, new equipment systems maintenance line. I've been exploring because it's been requested. I've been exploring, because it's been requested, uh, I've been exploring, uh, what it would take to move our programs out of TCD. That's been part of the conversation with the Municipal Building Design Committee for the last couple of years. Additionally, if I move the A's program out, my special ed offices have to go out. Um, for any of you who have been recently to TCD, the conditions continue to deteriorate. I have staff that have headaches on a regular basis. Um, I'm exploring the possibility of being able to move offices to TC, uh, from TCD down to Turkey Hill. Um, that really is gonna be totally dependent on whether or not that building can support enough electrical for that many workstations. And I also need to determine whether or not the internet can handle the added load as well. Because if the electricity can't support that many workstations down there, I, I can't make that move. But I still may make some move down there, um, to at least get the programs with students out.
So, the total expenditure in, uh, increase, or the total expense increase is fourteen point nine two percent? Without, like, forcing you to do more calculations, just like a rough estimate. Is that gonna be what it's gonna be next year too? Because like, if it's the same thing next year, like, we got big problems.
I don't see these lines decreasing. And all of the significant percentage cuts that we've made to so many of these lines, that's not sustainable.
Right. Eventually, you need to buy new construction for the kids.
Correct. I won't have to fund for the 911 compliance, or, you know, in the computer maintenance line, you can see there's a big jump there. That's, again, moving away from having used ESAR funds for Chromebook purchases over the last handful of years.
Yeah.
We're back to budgeting for, sixth graders get brand-new Chromebooks issued to them because they're entering the one-to-one world of the middle high school. They hold on to those devices until they exit eighth grade, they are retrieved. And when they enter as ninth graders, they get a brand-new Chromebook that, the life of which is about four years, takes them through to graduation where they then return. So, we are going to have to, every year, purchase computers for sixth grade and for ninth grade. And we're on a rotation for replacement of computers for our staff. And next year, the high school staff is the, the focus for next year. So, there's, there's that there, but there's also, um, projects that have been recommended by our, uh, computer consultant firm. Uh, these would be projects that would, um, provide upgrades that would enhance the security of the network.
Yeah.
They have done a full assessment, and some things are good, and some other things need to be addressed. So, there's money in that line to do those projects as well. And we already had some conversation around, uh, special ed tuition. But yes, I, again, I may not have lines that have sixty-five thousand to take care of an upgrade that needs to happen. Um, but we can't sustain seventy-five percent cut to multiple lines. You know, any stock of supplies that we have at the end of this year carries over to next year. But if we're buying less next year, we're gonna go through it.
Sure.
So, those other lines are, are gonna have to be increased.
We are stretched very thin.
We are.
And we're asking our people to do a lot and very little.
And even with all of the added benefit of staff with the grants, with the purchase of, um, funding of our iReady for several years and purchase of curriculum that was so badly needed, that this district would never have been able to afford to purchase and implement K-5. We would have been doing it one grade at a time. Each year, we would add another grade of purchase of curriculum materials. We have pursued relentlessly every grant that we come across. And some of them we are just not eligible for. We don't meet the criteria of the grant. So, we don't apply for those. Um, but we would, we would not be where we are right now without, not just the ESAR monies, all of the other grants that the curriculum office has pursued, secured, and executed.
We're able to purchase our whole sixth through eighth grade math curriculum through a grant as well. Not a new grant, it's part of the grant that, um, we used to hire a co-teaching coach for this year. We were able to roll over some of those funds and got approved. And it's just about the exact right amount for our math curriculum.
Thank you.
Um, thank you for going through that.
So, that was just to help everybody understand what the budget lines actually include. Because folks just looking at these lines and values wouldn't really have any understanding of, of it without that explanation. I won't go through the budget sheets for the salaries because this salary line might be paying twenty people. It, and that's all contractual.
Right.
So, that is what it is. People can, can look at the lines and see, um, what's being paid out. Um, so, with a needs-based budget to get to this 5.4, we're still looking at those nineteen point seven FTEs, and this is where they would occur. And then if you wanna take a look at, well, how does that compare to us having to get down to that three percent budget? If we can get a needs-based budget, we will save seven point four FTEs, and that's eight different people. If you look at the needs-based budget as a five point four percent increase, if we were comparing that to our typical annual two point five, the difference there is six hundred and seventy thousand. If you compare it to the town manager's two point nine, we're, we're in the realm of five hundred and sixty-five thousand difference from a three to the five point four. And then if you wanna look, you know, side by side here, this has every position that was listed on that three percent budget, all the cuts for that three percent budget. I had to break some of them out because I had them as like three paraprofessionals. I, I broke them out because we're... Any positions here in the gray are the ones that we don't have to cut if we can get five point four.
So, this doesn't save the fifth-grade band?
Fifth-grade band, um, we're, we're gonna stand with our recommendation that fifth-grade band, again, I want to be very clear, we're not talking about instrument lessons. Those are occurring now and will continue to occur after school. And kids of any age in the district can opt to take instrument lessons. What we're talking about is offering band before school. We have four music teachers in the district. If any one of them was interested in doing band, we would pay them a stipend to do band in the morning.
Can I address that for just a minute?
Please do.
Yep. Um, that is not a model unfamiliar in this district, which I would know. All right. Obviously, my husband was the band director forever. He did that exact model for years and years, only he wasn't paid for it, but for years and years, and he had huge numbers. His last year, his last performance, there were a hundred kids on the stage.
Oh, my God.
Half in the band, half in the chorus, some of them running back and forth because they did both. So, it is not something we haven't done before. Also, when my kids were young, they started in the sixth grade, but I, I wouldn't go there. I, I think we can do this model. This model also is used in Lancaster. I know because sometimes I am there subbing at seven-thirty in the morning with a half a dozen trumpets around me, eh, in Lancaster.
Do you do this now?
Now and again, when they need it. And it's a model that works, that's an extremely successful program. I would be the last person on earth to suggest something that isn't going to work for this particular program. I know it's not ideal, and I know some kids will have to find a ride with somebody else because their parent can't bring them. I understand that, and I, I'm sorry about that. But I know this model works. Mr. Beadmore?
So, I, I'm not as conversant in the scheduling issue around the fifth grade as I probably should be. And I, I feel like I need to get deeper into that. I was not at the last meeting. I, I didn't quite follow that conversation. Um, but I, I'm certainly convinced, and I, I think that if there were ever something that we need to over-correct on right now, given the amount of public comment and the, the organization and the enthusiasm and emotion associated with the public comment that we've heard around fifth-grade band, I think this is something that we need to double down on and figure out. And I, I tend to believe you and trust your expertise on this, and also, because I've been around for a while, I've seen this work a number of different ways. And I, I don't, you know, one of the things that I think that we have been a shiny example of in the Lunenburg School District relative to the rest of Lunenburg's town government is our ability to think creatively when it comes to scheduling. You know, there was a comment made last week at the Finance Committee meeting around adjusting somebody from full-time to part-time or going from part-time benefited to full, full-time benefited. And it was, well, we don't serve meals on Fridays, so we can't do a full forty-hour work week. Well, Eagle House is open five days a week, maybe we should look at the schedule, right? My point in bringing that up is not to pick on the COA Director because I think she's done an amazing job. But if you go down the hall here and go into the conference room and pull up the shade on Mr. Santry's schedule, you will see the amount of work and creativity that goes on into finding a way to come up with a schedule that has to account for all of our academic and graduation requirements, what the state puts on us in terms of instructional time with a certified teacher in front of a kid. It's, it's endless. And, and I think that this is a, a really good path to restore a service that, that really shouldn't be cut in a way that, that we can still deliver the service and, and still, you know, deliver the other things that we need to do in the middle school day. One, one comment that I, I do want to address, that, that came up during public comment this morning on this topic, um, and it was interesting who it came from, um, is the, the, the relative value of a stipended position. Um, and I, I think that this is really important. Um, because I think that where the greatest memories come from, from my years as a student in Lunenburg and where I think the greatest memories from my own kids will come, from their years as students in Lunenburg, are the extracurricular things that those kids did, did. My, my son is a standout athlete. My daughter was a standout, um, a writer and, and actress in, in theater. And largely, those things come from stipended positions. Ms. Dymatopoulos spoke earlier today. I was standing probably in this exact spot, because it was a practice football field, when her father, who was the head football coach in Lunenburg, told me that she was born. And he was working in a stipended position, and I remember it as clear as, as, as day, right? That was in the fall of nineteen eighty-six.
You're an amazing county creator.
Uh, I am, I'm full up on the county plan for the, uh, uh, anniversary that I read about coming up in a few years. I'm all in on that.
Oh, it is.
Um, my, my point here is, is that because we're small, we have to be flexible and find the levers to deliver services that we can, that, that we can deliver. And, and I'm not a big fan, honestly, in the way we do all of our stipends and, and frankly, the way that, that gets sucked up into, you know, some union obligations. Like, I think that those are issues that, that need to be dealt with. But in the grand scheme of things, these are the, this is the level of creativity that we need to, to use to be able to deliver as many opportunities as we can to kids.
Is it a cost issue or is it a scheduling issue?
Depends on the budget.
We're trying to get...
Uh, yeah, it's...
You know, the cost down and it contributes to get into a number that might be more reasonable and ask. And it also solves a different challenge within the school day in being able to provide interventions to all the kids. And keep in mind, interventions are also, we gotta come up with a different term for it. The, the kids who are higher achieving also get benefit during that time because they're pushed and challenged during that time. So, that's something that really is for all kids and would be a benefit for all kids. And it comes back to the priorities that the school committee has outlined around making sure that we're challenging our, our brightest, making sure that we're supporting the kids that are struggling, making sure that we're differentiating and giving each kid what they need. That is a really important thing. Now, I also heard somebody say, and there's gonna be no more health. Nope, that's not true. It's just that health is going to be incorporated within the phys ed schedule rotation. It's the phys ed teacher who teaches health.
So...
But since we went to a shared phys ed teacher across two buildings,
Now it's not the school.
It will be incorporated into the PE health block.
My issues with this are two. Number one, the after-school lessons cost money.
Yep.
So, that's another way parents have to pay.
They're not required to do them.
They don't have to do them.
Band students are not required to do them.
It's harder.
The, the music department came to me five years ago, six years ago, and asked me if they could start a program like this so that students could hone their skill on their instrument. So, they might be, you know, a novice player, and you wanna get them to the intermediate level. Or they might be intermediate and you wanna get them to the advanced level. Initially, that, that's what they wanted to see. Um, and we put it in play. But kids who have never picked up an instrument can also come. And if they wanted to learn an instrument, they'd be going to a music school, and they'd be paying there too. That's a service that we have here that our music department felt passionately about. We set it up. But band students are not required to participate in that, not at all. And the band, the fifth-grade band, if it happens in the morning before school, or if there's a teacher who would prefer to do it after school and has availability, who could do it after school, that would be for, not for instrumental, I'm gonna teach you how to play an instrument. They would have the band experience. It's not a version of instrumental lessons brought down to Turkey Hill in the morning.
But they would have group lessons.
Correct.
Because beginners can't sit in the band because they, you'd have, you know, eight different instruments and chaos.
Right.
You know, they'd have their group lesson on one day and then they'd all come back to the band on another day.
So the after-school instrumental lessons, honestly, it's a benefit to the people who want to take advantage of it. That's all it is. It's not required in any way, shape, or form.
So my other issue is that we need, we're gonna go for an override. We need to get it passed. We would have quite an ally in the band kids who have been here...
We're not an apology class teacher.
No, I'm saying, they've been here advocating for it.
I promise you that if the overriding becomes about, partially about, we're gonna keep the fifth-grade band or we're not gonna be able to afford the fifth-grade band, and these are very plain issues. We can say, we've gotta cut the fifth-grade band or you can vote for an override and we're gonna be able to enhance our music program. I feel like this is a very clear narrative.
So I have to say I disagree with you on the premise here. And I disagree with you on the politics relative to the issue that you brought up earlier tonight around this should be a school thing versus this should be a town thing. If we're put in a position where it's two point nine four percent or five point four two percent and the override hasn't passed, it's two point...